Okay, welcome everybody to committee of the hall. It is June 3rd, 6:00 PM. Addie, what's your call?
Cobb.
Here.
Kuta.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Posh.
Here.
Maddox.
Here.
Petrus.
Here.
Okay, first up on the agenda is the 2025 tax budget presentation. Acting Director Tara Schuster is here. There she is. Why don't you come and join us at the table? And, you know, right there in the end. That's the mayor's umbrella, by the way.
Oh, it's nice. You should tell me when the click is going.
So you want to just take it, kind of explain what it is and then...
Yes. I'm here to present the 2025 tax budget. Each year, the city is required to file the tax budget under the Ohio Revised Code. The tax budget for the upcoming year must be approved by July 15 and filed with the Budget Commissioner by July 20. The tax budget is primarily used to confirm that the county, we currently need the property taxes to balance next year's budget. So this, we're requesting the maximum amount for the 2025 year. The city anticipates that the property tax would bring in $10,505,000. The general fund is expected to receive a little over $8.1 million. The Recreation Facility Improvement Fund is expected to receive $590,000. The Police and Fire Pension individually anticipates $255,000. And the Bond Retirement Fund anticipates $1,265,000. For a total of $10,505,000. And the tax rate is at 12.42. It has not changed since 2018. This chart compares the 2024 to the 2025. As you see, every year, the city always asks for the full amount. And the general fund is the only one that anticipates bringing in more than next year at $10,000. So this graph shows, and I know Director Unitic used it last year, is that for every dollar of property tax that we bring in, the city receives 11 cents. The school receives the 67 cents. The county is about 16. And the library is at 5 cents.
Can you go back one?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
So this is the major operating fund summary. This is where I project the ending balances to be in 2024 for the major funds. The general fund is anticipated to be about $21.8 million. The street construction fund is $1.6 million. The Recreation Facility Improvement Fund is $652,000. The street lighting fund is a little over $2 million. The ARPA fund is expected to be at zero. The sewer disposal fund is at 9.3. The parking fund is a little over $48,000. And the refuse fund is a little over $87,000. And the ambulance service fund is a little over a million dollars.
President Kuda? You expect the ARPA fund balance to be zero because the monies will be allocated to the various accounts. Is that correct?
Should all be encumbered by the end of the year. We have to.
We will do. Thank you.
Since we're doing the tax budget, we are now officially into the 2025 budget process. I worked up a tentative budget schedule. I haven't had time to go over it with the mayor's office right before this. But this is, if we follow the same process as we did last year, this is my anticipated schedule. Everything in the bold are dates and we have to hit those. Everything else we can kind of work with. So June 3rd, we do the tax budget for the first read. June 17th would be the final read and it would have to pass. Because you guys are off the month of July. The tax budget has to be adopted by July 15th. So the next meeting, we would have to pass it. And then July 20th, 2024, the tax budget has to be submitted to the county. And then these dates are tentative. But July 15th, I anticipate giving the 2025 revenue estimates to the department. I would like to receive them back by July 22nd. And then we would review it with the mayor's office July 31st. We open the budget, the operations budget, the position budget for all the employees, the employment for the jobs would be August 5th. We would give the expenditure budget to all the departments August 14th. And then we would need them back by August 26th so we could put the whole entire budget together and present it to the mayor on September 5th. And we would be ready for the budget hearings between the mayor, the finance department and the departments between September 9th through the 13th. The finance department would meet with the mayor October 2nd for all the capital requests. The final book would go to the mayor on October 28th from the finance department. We would get the, that gives him time to go in and change whatever he needs to change or anything that we've missed. And then the book would go to council November 12th. And then sometime in November, so this is something you guys have to start thinking about, November 2024, is when we have the hearings with council, all the individual departments. So if we're going to have three reads of the new 2025 budget, operating budget, it would be November 18th, December 2nd, and December 16th, council meetings to get three reads in there. And then December 16th, if that's the final council meeting, we would not only have to approve the 2025 budget, we would also have to do the final 2024 budget amendments and transfers.
President Kuda?
Yes.
Might we get council get copy of that?
Of course.
It would be really helpful.
Yeah, the presentation, the, yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's good. Any questions? I would just remind everybody that to please, anything related to the budget, please send that over to Addie. She's been collecting those since the beginning of the year. And that way, we'll have a way to kind of see where everybody's at on the budget. We start talking about this in September and October. If there are no further questions, we will move on to the legislative review. There are two items for consideration for adoption tonight. The first one is Resolution Number 094. Resolution appointed Kemp, Jay Cox as a member of the Transportation and Mobility Committee. We discussed this the last meeting. Any comments on that? Okay, then hopefully we'll pass that for the regular meeting. The Resolution 095 is the resolution expressing appreciation to the Charter Review Commission for their hard work. Any comments, questions on that?
Thank you for doing that. I was gonna ask you, if all council people...
Oh, yeah. Anybody, anybody want to add their name to this?
Yes.
Everybody? Is that Kuda? Okay. Great.
It's possible for us to maybe print this out on nice paper, give it to them. That group has worked so hard and they've had so many meetings. And it might be nice if they have something that they could, you know, place in their homes.
Hey, do we have nice paper?
Yes, we do have.
Let's talk though. That's good. All right, first reading only is this tax budget we just discussed. So hopefully we pass that on the 17th. Second readings, 086. This is Resolution Establishing Our Recess for July. Last time. 087 is an ordinance amending the medical marijuana, Chapter 711. This, the law director is a formality for comporting our, the state law that passed last year with our current medical marijuana ordinance, correct?
I'm not sure if we'd call it a formality, but the purpose is to comport it to state law.
Correct. All right. Any questions or any guests?
So just to be clear, we're expanding what they're able to sell. And that's to allow the recreational sale of marijuana, correct?
Correct.
And I see, I see we have somebody from Amplify here. I'd like to know how things are going with Amplify so far in the, sell of medical marijuana and whether they're prepared to handle what I'm assuming is going to be the significant influx of customers for recreational sales.
I'd be glad to hear from Amplify.
I don't, not to put you on the spot.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to speak.
Can you say your name and your, kind of where you live?
Yep. My name is Anthony Carabello.
I'm sorry?
Anthony Carabello. I live at 1018 Westport Circle in Youngstown.
Where you worked was fine.
And you could, you could, you could come set up up here.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity. Thank you for allowing us to operate on Coventry for the past two years. Really exciting times around the corner. I believe we are absolutely 100% ready. It's, it's going to be a challenge, no doubt. But some of the preparations that we have made actually started back when we did those building renovations, beginning a couple, you know, a couple of years ago. You know, we were prepared for the fact that adult use sales would eventually come to the state. So we designed our building with a very large lobby and a very large sales floor. You know, even with those, you know, even with those, with that foresight, you know, ahead of time. You know, we still, we still would anticipate, anticipate on day one opening sales, there will be a line outside. We are working, we are working, we have a queue rope brought in to help us queue that line in our very large lobby. So those are preparations that we're doing as soon as, as soon as this week. We have our security team with Ashwood, who's going to be working with us to get that set up inside of our building. One of the things that we noticed when seeing other adult use dispensaries in other states operating was they have a lot of registers, but folks are ordering at the same register that they're exchanging money. And those are two very different functions. And we have a lot of folks, especially in our current medical program, who, once they've learned the menu, a lot of our folks, in fact, 75% of our folks shop online ahead of time once they've, you know, gotten to learn the menu. So at that, they place an online order that's scheduled for pickup. And then they come in at that scheduled time and pick it up. We realize that when we make this switch, that there are going to be folks who need educated on this menu all over again. So if you come into our floors, we have our line of registers in the back. And then in the front of the sales floor, we actually have two separate counters where folks can go and place their orders. That's done in a separate space from where they pick it up. So essentially, we double, you know, we can double the operational capacity of our sales floor. We have one area where folks are just placing orders, another where they're picking them up. So that allows for folks who, once they've learned the menu and placed their pre-orders, to get in and out. That's something we've done, been doing very successfully over the past couple of years. In order to make sure that we have enough staff to accommodate, we actually just hired 14 additional staff in addition to the 27 that we already had on staff. We did that a couple of weeks ago and they are, they are in the midst of being trained, midst of being trained. So they will actually have four to six weeks of dispensary experience before we turn on, you know, turn on sales to the adult, you know, to adult use consumers as well. So really tried to do our homework and make sure that we're adequately staffed up with trained folks. And right now, our focus is just on, you know, on day one, which will be, you know, once, once the public knows what day adult use sales turn on, you know, there will certainly be some amount of, you know, some amount of excitement generated by that. And our goal is just trying to, you know, minimize the impact of the street as much as possible on that day. But other than that, we're, you know, we're staffed up to handle, you know, up to 1,000 people a day through that building. Don't anticipate that we'll, you know, we'll see that, you know, consistently nearly on day one, but that's what we are staffed up and ready to do. So happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. You answered my questions with your presentation.
Yes, I have a question. Not real knowledgeable on the use of medical marijuana versus recreational marijuana. Is there a difference? Or I'm quite sure one needs a card or something. What's, can you tell me what the difference is?
Correct. So a little bit about myself, my background is actually in pharmacy. I'm a licensed pharmacist. So at the root, there is no difference. Cannabis is cannabis. And when we look at plant medicine or medicine in general, it's the dose that makes the quote unquote poison. So, you know, with medical cannabis, a lot of our folks are able to help their symptoms without, you know, without feeling extremely impaired.
I guess I mean as far as purchasing.
As far as purchasing.
Yes.
Just have to be 21 years or older and present a valid state ID. And at our reception desk, we have installed Vera scanners. So our, our staff will drop those in and it will validate that it is a valid ID and also check that they're 21 for medical patients so they still need to present their medical marijuana card.
Wow, okay. Well, you must pay very well to hire 14 people so quickly. Most people are having trouble hiring and getting staffs. So that's wonderful that you have been able to hire that many.
I mean, it's a, it's a great, great neighborhood. We tell folks Coventry is where I got my first parking ticket. Because growing up in Youngstown, bands made it big when they played at the grog shop.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's pretty cool. Sorry, go ahead.
So you talked about capacity, about 100 patrons, 1,000 patrons per day. So that's what you're billed out. When you've seen other legislation like this is, that has passed in other cities, maybe not Ohio, but elsewhere, I mean, does the building have the, I mean, I mean, what's your capacity right now, like 200? And do you expect it to be up to 100 or?
On our, on our busiest days already, we've seen 500 people a day through there, like on our busiest day.
With medical.
Right. And that, you know, and that's not in, you know, consistent average. But on our, you know, peak capacity, that's what we were able to see, you know, see in that building.
Is it right to assume though, now that it's open to everybody, that capacity could be, if you're up to 1,000, maybe that capacity is going to be like twice that? And is there like a safety plan involved if it just gets way, way too big? Are people just going to queue up in front of the store and you're going to take as many as you can?
We don't anticipate that that will, with the geographic distribution of what's around us already, we don't anticipate that's going to be the case. As a matter of fact, there's also going to be a dispensary that's opening up on South Euclid, the corner of Cedar and Green. And they're going to be opening by, you know, by the end of the summer from what we were told. So there's other locations in Woodmere and we have some in Bedford. So given that there's quite a number of outlets in the, you know, in the greater Cleveland area.
Okay, thanks.
Absolutely.
Question for the law director. The June 7th date, is that when we would be able to start accepting applications or when vendors could start selling recreational products?
I believe that that's the date that the materials for vendors to make application are expected to become available. And to Councilmember Cobb's comment earlier, this, this legislation does not authorize Amplify specifically to do anything different than they're currently doing. But it puts in place this regulatory scheme that allows them to apply for the, for the permit and the license.
So let's say that they're really good at filling out that application. They get it in the same day. Do we have any sense for how long? Maybe that's a question for, say, if they're sure, how long it might take for us to process the application?
So I, I think the process way it worked with medical marijuana, I need to speak here, is that I don't suspect until they at least got some preliminary approval from the state, we would even accept an application from them for our license.
Okay.
And the state will take some amount of time to be determined, which I don't know, you have more insight into that than, than I do. But it wouldn't be instantaneous, you know, it's not going to be too late that that would happen.
Yeah, we're told it's going to be relatively quickly.
That means different things to the state.
We're relatively.
Relatively quickly. But all, all indications are that they will have licenses issued and dispensaries approved and ready to go for, you know, mid to late June sales.
Me too.
So once they get the initial preliminary feedback from the state, and then we would go ahead and have that submitted for our application.
So maybe 30, 60 days.
Are you located exactly where?
1782 Coventry Road.
Oh, okay. I'm gonna have to come visit. I have never been inside of a...
Yeah, absolutely. I've never been inside. I'm curious.
Okay. Well, thank you.
At the same time.
Are there any other questions? Yeah. Well, they can handle 500 people. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Moving on, Resolution 090 is an ordinance amending Title III. Councilman Petrus has talked about this before. Anything to add? Nope. Third readings. So we're not voting on DORA tonight, but that's 077, an ordinance approving the application filed by the mayor and authorizing the establishment of a designated outdoor refreshment area. I know I have some questions, but by all means. Anybody else? Yes.
President Kuda, what you just said, the memo that we received concerning this ordinance said that Mayor Seren filed the application to City Council on the 4/15. Regular council meeting, application must be advertised newspaper, et cetera, et cetera, and provide, provide public notice. Not earlier than 30 days, but no later than 60 days after the initial application. So how does that...
Initial publication of the notice.
Notice. So we're still okay in terms of timelines then?
Yeah. I don't know what that date was, but it allows action on the meeting of the 17th.
On the 17th, yeah. And that's what was actually in the notice too, is that it would be considered at the 17th.
Thank you for conversation.
I do.
It's hard to...
It is.
At the public hearing last week, Adam Fleischer spoke about the plan to do a reassessment of the DORA. And the public health and safety plan within the legislation states that beginning with the commencement of the DORA and continuing for a period of three consecutive months, the mayor of Cleveland Heights and the CHPD, Chief of Police, shall meet monthly to review the safety plan herein, unquote. And we have gotten some opposition to this legislation because we have received those citizens are concerned about the history of pedestrian injuries and fatalities on Lee Road. I'd like to request that council receive updates when these reviews occur between you and the mayor.
Chief, can you join us at the table, please? Thank you.
I got a couple of questions. My first is, so are we not voting on this tonight?
Well, I want to make sure that...
Because we have additional questions? Because based on what you just said, it sounded like there was an impending vote. That's why I'm asking now.
An impending what?
An impending vote on this.
No, well, there is on the 17th.
Okay.
It's not timely tonight under that 30 to 60 from publication.
Okay. Is that why I'm the only name on this legislation now and the other names were removed? I'm just curious about what, what happened between that time.
You know what? Since that's a different question, I'm glad to ask. But let's, let's, let's get to Councilman Larson's question first. So what is the safety plan? I know that it says there, there has to be a safety plan. What is the safety plan for the DORA?
Yeah, no, thanks for asking. Yeah, I've had, you know, various conversations with the mayor and we've talked verbally about the safety plan going forward and about the DORA. I don't have anything solid yet, but yeah, absolutely. Once that's prepared, I will, I will share it with everybody.
Could that happen before the 17th? Because what people are concerned about, I mean, what people have at least said to me and I think some others, is they want to know there's going to be supervision. There's going to be like a beat cop or, you know, some kind of patrolling going on. And that there will be enforcement of anybody who might walk, you know, outside of the designated areas. And then there's the safety issue of the street crossings. You know, any jaywalking, especially with cops. And just the general, you know, because there have been some, unfortunately, two fatalities in the last year in that area between Lee Road and, I'm sorry, between Cedar and Salisbury. Am I, do I have that right?
Correct. One, one, one by the library.
Yeah, one was by, that's right.
And one Cedar.
I mean, people just want to know that it's going to be safe.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, at the beginning of, of the year, I don't remember who's been in the meetings, but as it stands now, you know, the mayor and I have talked. And I think we're on the, the second month now. I have beat cops, if you will, working from 6:00 to 10:00 at all the main business districts to help, you know, increase officer presence and, and safety and monitor vehicular and pedestrian traffic. So that's implemented now. Police academy is graduating now. So working with my staff going forward to best provide safety throughout the city to all the beats, including Lee Road. You know, to get the traditional beat cop back. But yeah, I'm working with my staff now, talking about the DORA and moving forward how we can best provide a safe environment for everybody.
Any other questions for the chief?
Oh, just the same one I had a minute ago.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Well, I'm new here and I don't feel like I should waste everybody's time kind of go over this. But from your personal perspective, do you feel that this is safe for our citizens to implement?
Yes, I do. As many here know, I, I live in Cleveland Heights, had my whole career. I live off of Lee Road. I visit Lee Road daily all the way up and down. And, you know, I looked at statistics and crashes and I just happened to look at traffic crash data for the Cedar Lee intersection. And we've only had one crash this year at, at the intersection there. That might be doing part for the traffic control device that's there. But we've had implemented our shop, a shop grant we got for safety patrol, traffic enforcement. One target area was Cedar Lee based upon, you know, from what happened last year. So, you know, and research and the data for, you know, disturbances and other incidents, there's no, if I had a strong belief that there was going to be a problem or concern, I, I, I would say so. But as I sit here, you know, I, I visit Lee Road frequently. It's my home. I, I don't see a problem or concern moving forward with the project.
Thank you.
Any other questions for?
Are you, are you going to put beat cops in every business district?
Well, as it now, ma'am, as you're aware, we've, we've been challenged with law enforcement personnel. So back in, might have been the end of April, beginning of May, I instituted to the best, I could get people to work, you know, all the business districts. So Noble Road, Coventry, Taylor, Cedar. So Noble Road, Coventry, Taylor, Cedar, Fairmont, Lee Road. You know, just to have their primary objective is to be visible, enforce parking, you know, just so the business districts can see the officer. So it's, again, my hope, I'm being optimistic. I just had another officer start. I have three officers in training right now. Six are coming out of the academy, but they don't graduate till the end of June. But then it's another four months of training. So I assure everybody here is, you know, I share the same concern about, you know, the business district safeties. And I'm optimistic and doing my best to get back up to where we need to be and to get that going again.
I'm not pressuring you. I just wanted to just clarify that, will that be walking or driving?
Well, we're looking at the best way of deployment. Like I said, I'm looking at terms of shift strength, you know, looking at the shifts, the Traffic Safety Bureau, Detective Bureau, the other functions we do, and look at the best way to deploy the, you know, the officers in the business district. But that's, you know, going to be a, one of their duties is to get out and actually meet and walk around and check the parking lots and meet the business district owners.
Okay. Thank you for that affirmation.
So whatever you could give us at the next meeting, you know, on the seventeenth, as far as, you know, what you're going to be implementing to kind of complement the Dora and make sure that people are, and I talked to some of the business owners today and they were, they were like, hey, let's let's just make sure we do this right.
Yeah, and to sure, President Kuda's, you know, like I said, in my years here, I've developed and maintained professional relationships with many of the business owners there. And we've always maintained communications, you know, about concerns and safety. And yes, absolutely, get something together to, for everybody.
Any other questions for the chief? All right, thank you.
I appreciate it.
One of the other things in the legislation, I'm just kind of looking at the council members, is that there's a maintenance plan. I know that...
Mr. President?
I know that...
Mr. President?
I'm going to finish this. I know that the maintenance plan is...
Mr. President, though.
I'm in the middle of something.
But I asked my question first.
I know, I know.
You said I had to wait until it was finished, so are we switching subjects or what are we doing?
I, everything's going to be addressed. I want to talk about the Dora plan first.
So I guess I'm confused about...
You're out of order right now. Please let me finish.
So it, so we ask a question before you move on to the topic. It's okay to just move on past that question?
I'm not going to move, I'm not moving past anything.
But we are. I patiently waited for you all to ask the chief a question now.
Thank you. Your question will...
And then you dismissed me and you moved on to make another statement. Do you understand what I'm saying? And so, so being out of order and being disrespected, I just want to make that clear. That's what happened.
Yeah, I feel this is disrespectful.
And I feel that it was disrespectful. You tell me I had to wait. I waited. We asked the chief the questions. He removed himself from the table. I thought I should be getting an answer to my question, but instead of that, you moved on and decided to make another statement. Do you see how someone would see how...
This is related...
Be dismissed by that?
This is related to the portion of the legislation, the same portion of the legislation. Because actually, there's one sentence that says that the city will have a safety plan and a maintenance plan. And the thing that I'm concerned about is, you know, I love the idea of showing off the city and having this, you know, vibrant business district. But what I'm concerned about is the condition of the parking garage. You know, the elevator still doesn't work. There's a lot of, the parking lot behind the...
Point of order.
The parking lot behind...
This is wrong for so many reasons. I'm not going to sit here and be dismissed. It would have taken two seconds for someone to answer my question. Now you're pontificating about the parking garage and additional safety. I asked the question, I think as a councilperson at this table, I interrupted you politely when I asked that question. I think I deserve an answer. We are who we are.
I can see this isn't going to stop.
Because I keep being dismissed. Do you see how, it was just unnecessary, Mr. President? I put up with this a lot. I put up with the backdoor conversations. I put up with the side conversations in and out of this room. I put up with being dismissed when I'm making very clear comments and now you're going to dismiss me at this committee of the whole.
I'm being dismissed.
I am being dismissed.
No.
Then why don't I have an answer to my question? Why have you not moved on to discuss the parking garage? I asked a simple question, a question that I asked, and then we started talking about safety. My question was, why were the other names removed from this legislation? That takes two seconds to ask, but instead now we've moved on to the parking garage. So you decide, no matter what order I ask a question in, you can dismiss me or move it along so that you can say what you want to say. And that's wrong. That's absolutely wrong.
That's not happening.
And that's the culture that's creating the issues that we're having on this council. So it looks like I'm an angry black man again because you simply, all you had to do was answer my question. But instead, I'm being dismissed. I'm absolutely being dismissed.
Councilman, Councilman?
I'm being dismissed, Mr. President.
Let me answer, let me answer your question.
Please answer my question. Please answer my, I would appreciate an answer to my question. I think I deserved an answer. I waited patiently and you dismissed me.
Did I answer the question? Because this is really...
If you're going to keep talking and not, no. So if you're going to answer my question, yes.
That's what I just said.
Then please answer my question.
I removed my name because I'm not sponsoring the legislation. I had nothing to do with it. I had nothing to do with drafting it. I had nothing to do with creating it. So I didn't have my name on it. Any, did anybody else?
I appreciate that. There were two names on this legislation. That took a minute. So explain to me why you had to dismiss me when you could have just said that a minute ago. That had nothing to do with safety in the parking garage or anything, but you knew I had the question. You knew what it was already. So to build a culture of partnership and collaboration?
No, what I want to...
All you had to do was do that. But you, because you dismissed me because you can't and it's wrong and I'm not going to allow it.
Right.
So I would appreciate the same respect you give everyone else at that table, regardless of how you feel about me personally.
Okay.
And anyone watching can clearly see, I sat here and I waited and I asked. It was rude, it was disrespectful, and it was dismissive, and I do not appreciate it at all. And I would appreciate if I've asked a question, I get an answer.
Anybody who's watched our council meetings knows...
Well, see, just how we built this culture and how we arrived here. Don't go there.
Yeah.
I got time tonight.
Yeah, that's great.
This was wrong. It was wrong and I would appreciate if you respect me like everyone else at this table. And when I ask a question, you treat me like everyone else.
Let me ask you something.
No, you're going to ask me anything because they just took me forever and they didn't answer my question.
We're done with this.
Because you answered my questions, you can move on now. So I appreciate that.
Okay.
That's what a sense of collaboration looks like. You acknowledge someone, you answer the question and you move on. That's all I asked you to do.
I call on you.
This was completely unnecessary. And the only reason we're here right now is because you dismissed me.
I call on you all the time.
You dismissed me all the time.
I call on you.
And you decide when something is important.
I call on you all the time.
There was no reason to move on without getting an answer. But I appreciate the fact that, I appreciate the fact...
You asked me if you could do something out of order and I said, go ahead.
All right.
And that's what happens all the time.
It is not, Mr. President.
This doesn't happen all the time.
Mr. President?
You just came loaded for bear and you were ready to do this and you didn't.
Congratulations with the question. Congratulations for what? If you ran your meetings and treated everyone at this table the same way, you would have these issues. No, mission accomplished. I got my, I got my answer.
I need to move on.
And I got my answer. There's no reason to be dismissive.
On the question of maintenance, I just want to make sure that we're moving ahead with something, with a place we can be proud of. I walked this Cedar Lee area with a merchant last week, not last week, week before. And a lot of things were pointed out to me that show that we are not ready, quite ready for prime time. So I want to make sure that we also have a maintenance plan. I emailed you, Assistant Director Anderson, do you have any comment on the maintenance portion of this?
I don't believe the statute references maintenance to the safety plan.
It just says sanitation.
Right. And so I believe, you know, we indicated where there were existing public trash cans and indicating, you know, we are going to supplement those when we roll off site at all of the central districts and, you know, for the Dora. I think, you know, obviously on the safety plan, it's at the chief's discretion, but also with the sanitation plan, I think as it built into the plan, regular meetings and discussion with staff and council about tweaks that need to be made along the way. I think we found universally that, you know, there's been very little to no negative impact in any of the cities that we've looked at. The vast majority have gone on to expand their footprints and expand their hours because there's been nothing but positive and very little negative that has come with it. You know, the majority of communities have not seen a need for additional beyond what is currently in those districts, safety patrols, slight modifications to, you know, sanitation pickup and trash cans in their district. So I think overall, I think, you know, in terms of a lot of these things, it's monitoring and adapting as needed. You know, it's going to have to take into account special events. I think that's really where the impact comes.
No question.
And when we have special events, even without the Dora, I think we found, you know, the need for additional security, oftentimes for the organizers, you know, expense, bringing in extra trash cans and things like that. You know, so overall, I don't think we expect significant negative or additional burdens on existing city services.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I got the idea from this sentence here. It says, "The city of Cleveland Heights has determined that the sanitation plan described herein is sufficient to help maintain the appearance and public health of the Dora." So I was just thinking about the overall appearance. I noticed that on the streets, like especially in those little parking areas, there was a lot of debris collected. And I know that behind some of the businesses, there's a lot of garbage piled up. I know that that's their responsibility, but then again, it's kind of our responsibility to, you know, ticket any business that, you know, isn't following the rules. And again, you know, just in the kind of spirit of showing off this area, you know, just to make sure that it's in the best shape that it possibly can be. Any other questions about the Dora? Oh, yeah.
Just a comment. I'd like the Cedar Lee Sid to consider purchasing BPI certified compostable cups for use by the customers in the district. As the official cup is described, it's compost or recyclable material. So recyclable is good, compostable is even better.
You know, I'm glad you brought that out because in my version of the legislation, and maybe Assistant Director Anderson can, in my version of the legislation, it didn't say anything about future heights being the ones that would...
The new one does not.
Pardon?
It's the, the new one does not.
Oh, the new one does not, okay. So that answers that.
Yeah, and so we've come alive, so yeah, so we have updated the plan to remove to remove future heights as the provider of the wristbands and the cups. We have put in the Cedar Lee Special Improvement District, you know, as I think may also add in or other entities that are designated by the city just to cover all of our bases. You know, in terms of the cups, I believe there are some limitations. The state gives us pretty hard rules on what we can and can't do with cups. So that may be set a little bit more than we want.
Thank you.
Yes.
If I'm remembering correctly, that technically right now, the Sid does not exist? They're in the process of getting it up and running again?
So it exists as a 501(c)(3) still. It's still an entity that legally exists. They just right now currently aren't receiving a special tax assessment.
Okay.
So they have less funding stream, but they still exist. You know, I think they are optimistic. They're going to get their renewal. You know, obviously, if that is the case, you know, they'll be off and running, kind of managing the cup wristband side of it. If for whatever reason they don't, you know, we wanted to provide the opportunity for the city or other entity to be able to step in.
I just wanted to verify that they do exist so that we don't pass legislation that references a group that, you know, is around...
Yes.
But doesn't officially operate. But, okay, thank you.
All right. Anything else on Dora?
Yep.
Yep.
I just want to make clear for the public to notice that the conversation we just had is the reason that you dismissed me in the first place, which was completely irrelevant to the question that I asked and multiple people have wanted me to mention to make sure I addressed that. So they saw that. The next time you're going to ignore a question of mine, I would at least like it to be relevant to the prior topic. Otherwise, I would like to be acknowledged again like everyone else at this table, Mr. President. Thank you.
Yeah, I wrote those two topics down together on this paper. You can look at that if you want to. Resolution number eighty-two is a resolution establishing supplemental process and procedures for city council developmental legislation. So this has been amended, actually just rearranged slightly by Councilman Petrus. Thank you for doing that. Do you want to say what you've...
Sure. Like you said, I just took a look at it and rearranged some of the things. So I don't think that I really changed any of the text. I feel like this closely mirrors what we are already doing. And there was a reference to legislative memos. That was one thing that I did remove. We recently have talked about giving updates in, from our committees in these meetings. And so I felt like that would be sufficient and may not necessitate the legislative memos. But I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone might have about it.
I mean, I looked at it and it was, you know, just a nice kind of synthesis of what we already had. I don't know if anybody else.
I think it's streamlined to go along.
I do have a question for the law director. The exhibit was the part that was amended, not the legislation itself. Do we still need to... I didn't put "as amended" on third reading of the agenda. Should we do a motion to amend?
I would, yeah.
So when we do the legislation, I would read it?
Yeah.
Okay, that sounds good. I want to thank everybody. This was something else. Well, sorry, Councilman Posh wasn't with us at the time when we hashed this out. But it was a good exercise because we, you know, we got to collaborate with the law director and create a process that we're all agreed on and, you know, something that works. And I think it answered a lot of questions about, you know, just what happens when and, you know, how well we're working together on legislation when we do create council-initiated legislation. So...
If I might, I just wanted to mention that the one change that, whether I'm signed off on the collaboration, recognizing council, you know, makes these decisions and I respect that, will work with whatever council wants to do. But one of the changes that was initially reflected here was for, if you, there's a, I don't know if the red line is in the packet or not, but there was a statement that if there's general support for a proposed idea in the committee of the whole via a legislative memo, the author can submit the idea to the law department for drafting. And one of the, you know, benefits that I was hoping to realize for council through that process and for the law department was sort of having the round robin discussion in this room, kind of full-throated pros, cons, what people wanted to see, what people didn't want to see before the law department started drafting legislation. And it's now moved up to sort of a committee stage and the memo reference, as the councilman mentioned, is gone. So we'll work with it, you know, but again, my preference would have been that that remained the way that it was. I think it would have been a step forward for the process, but I'll listen back if, you know, if we have additional issues.
Councilman Petrus, did you, was that something you moved?
Yeah, as I just shared, so...
Yeah, okay.
We have talked about providing updates in these meetings. And even in like today's agenda, under committee reports, it looks like public safety and housing are going to give updates. And so it seemed like that practice would be a good opportunity for us to share and take questions. So...
I mean, that makes sense. So I've just been informed that the next item is the ARPA update, but premium con is not yet available. So what we're going to do is go into executive session now. And if premium is available afterwards, I guess we'll do that. So anybody who's here, not staff, would...
We got to make a motion.
We have to make a motion.
Oh, yeah. We, yeah, I'm sorry.
Jesus.
And we do need to make a motion for executive session.
For the purpose of...
We need to discuss the state's implications of city-owned real property.
Councilman Cobb?
I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session to consider the sale or lease of city-owned property.
Second.
Want to call the roll?
Cobb?
Aye.
Petrus?
Aye.
Maddox?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Posh?
Yes.
Larson?
Aye.
Kuda?
Aye.
Okay, we are back from executive session. And unfortunately, it looks like we're going to have to skip the ARPA update. This guy, House, is not here, but we are going to move on with committee reports. I know Chairman Posh wants to address the Public Safety and Health Committee. So, Councilman, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Okay, so bear with me. I'm new at all this. Still trying to figure out how these committee structures work. But there's the Public Safety and Health Committee. It seems like it dovetails into a lot of work that we've sort of seen possibly... possibly the DORA safety plan, possibly the Racial Justice Task Force. But at this point, I feel uncomfortable calling that meeting to order without hearing from every single one of you on what you think that committee should be doing. You guys have more history than I do on this council. Yes, Gail and Craig are part of the committee. And I'm sure they're gonna educate me on what has to get done. But I'd like to call a meeting. And before I do that, though, I'd like to get a better understanding of what we, as a council, feel like that committee should be doing. And if there's members of staff here, if they have feelings, I'd like to hear their feelings, too.
Sure.
So...
She's just left.
Anybody wanna weigh in on this? Go ahead.
I would like to see us ask for information from the administration about the Let Safe program. I'd like to know how many have, rental units have been certified since they started with the first Zone One or what they're calling a Target Area One. So I'd like to know, you know, and within that number, how many passed the testing and didn't have to do anything further? How many had to do further containment, like the paint that we talked about? Also like to know if there were any people relocated because they couldn't be in their units whilst the repairs were done. I'm just looking for some follow-up data on the program that we've been running for the last almost a year.
Anybody else?
I would like to have some updates, basically, general updates around the safety in the city. We used to kind of get some general updates on what was going on, what we should be paying attention to, what something, anything critical that came up. We don't really get those anymore. I know the mayor don't want the chief to give, what do you call it, reports on public safety. But if we can have some type of general information, a lot of different things that we get, we get once we read the newspaper or whatever somebody is telling us. So if we can have some kind of way that will make the mayor feel comfortable, some type of updates on the safety around the city.
I guess I'm, when did he say that? Because I don't recall him ever stating we wouldn't get a safety report. The mayor stated that. And I just wanna be careful because I did not hear that. And so that's, that's very shocking because I know those kind of things have been articulated prior, but I don't ever recall him saying the chief can't give us a report.
No, what he has said, we had asked for was when Chief, what's her name?
Mecklenburg.
Mecklenburg used to do a safety report during the council meetings. And we had asked, could that be reinstated? And he said he didn't think that would be something he would want to do because he didn't want to put fear or whatever into the community with, I guess, negative reports far as what's going on in the city. So yes, he did say that. And I'm not saying that chief wouldn't give a report just through the committee, something general far as safety that's going on or maybe updates or things that, just like he just mentioned, far as hiring new people and where he's going to station them in different areas in the community.
Are you talking about like data? Like, like crime statistics, those kind of things? I mean, I'm, I'm just...
No, I hadn't even thought about that as far as actual data. But, I mean, just like the chief said, where he's hiring, what, fourteen people are coming out of the...
I got an update.
And he's gonna do beats in the business district. When is that gonna start? How many officers, what areas that he's gonna roll that out into? What, you know, maybe the lead area right now, maybe Coventry. Just general updates on what's happening and where they're placing safety, just so residents will know that we're upping our safety task force.
Again, I just wanna state, that's not the same as saying he doesn't wanna give a safety update. That's simply stating he doesn't wanna split out across the city. Every individual, we asked him for was specifics about crimes and crime data in, in areas and targeted areas. When we talk about a safety update, you're talking about everything, updating the police reports, updating our relationship with the school, it is, our traffic, it's more robust than that. So that's why I just wanted to be careful because no one ever said we wouldn't get a safety report. He was specifically speaking to those specific incidents that are happening around town. And some of that, in, in fact, one of the reasons that came up is because many residents were asking even about those addresses with some of those incidents where those calls were had. That's, that's what he was speaking to, not in, in some general safety reports. I just didn't want the public to think that we're not somehow authorized to get a report. It's just those specifics about specific incidences, some of those addresses, that, that, that was what he was speaking about.
I wasn't asking about addresses or anything like that. I was specifically talking about, I think you were in the room with me.
I remember.
And we asked about having a report that the former chief used to give. And the mayor was not interested in that. So I was not going any further than that, other than some general updates of what's going on in the city. I know a lot of people talk about different crime that's happening in the Coventry area, the Lee Road area, the Noble area. It'd be great to have some updates of, you know, we're rolling out a new plan here in the Coventry area or something in Noble area. So people are aware that we are trying to do what we can far as making our police force more robust and more invisible in the community.
So maybe this is what we do, and I'm just sort of looking for everybody's blessing on this, is I think, let's see if we can work with the administration on coming up with some sort of key measures that they're comfortable releasing to the committee that is kind of like a starting point. And from my understanding, a lot of this data already exists. It's not, we're, I wouldn't wanna ask staff to do a lot of extra work just for us to sort of like noodle on something we don't know what we're noodling on. If there's some data out, I mean, the best example I can give is we had a roomful of people in our last meeting from the Noble neighborhood. And they were, you know, safety was clearly on their mind. And I, you know, as a councilperson, was unable to figure out, hey, well, really, you talk about a safety issue. I mean, you know, how does that compare to maybe another community within our city? I mean, or is it, do we have safety data? We can define safety with it, maybe the committee needs help. Maybe I need all your help figuring out what we're defining safety as. But, you know, here we are in Noble, last year versus this year. I mean, is it getting worse? And is there something that, that, you know, we can do to help so we can be part of the solution? Or maybe it's actually getting better and maybe that's something that we need to make sure that our community understands?
And not only Noble, since the DORA, people are talking about safety in Lee Road, which I was not aware of as much. So, I mean, there's a lot of things that's happening in different communities we may not be aware of. But when things happen, people come in and talk about it, so...
So is this appropriate? So I think that the things that we've mentioned, I've mentioned, what I've heard, is it appropriate for this committee to be asking these things? And do we have council support on asking the administration for some of this information?
I think that's a really good place to start. Councilman?
I was simply saying, we just had to record things else to be at the last meeting to a presentation. I think just keep that in mind, we still do have the opportunity to have the information as well. So if you wanted to have the chief do that, I'm sure if the other department heads are willing to do those presentations, there's no way he would, he would stop the police chief from doing it. So I just wanted to keep that in mind as well. We can always get those reports. And any additional information or updates during our council meeting, during those department leaderships, so that's something I would do, too.
Good, great.
I think anything you can merge with the city and get the mayor's permission to utilize and bring updates on would always be helpful.
So one last issue, you sort of look at this DORA legislation that, that went through, and there was clearly a safety plan. So is the normal way that you would work through things on council, should it hit this committee? Should that legislation be discussed in this kind of committee before it gets here?
Yeah, the idea of, you know, the council president moving that to a committee is somewhat standard. But in, sometimes we just keep every, you know, certain things in committee of the whole depending on if there's a timeline, you know, thing where we don't really have time, you know, for when the committee might need and then to come back. And in the case of DORA, you know, their application process and so forth is, you know, it's all kind of timed out. You can't like vote on it before thirty days and then, you know, but it's got a deadline, too, so... But, but as far as the oversight, you know, maybe taking a look at how's, you know, the kind of how's it going thing, you know, down the road, that, that could be a very appropriate, I think, role for the committee.
Okay. So I'm gonna independently reach out to Councilwoman Larson and Councilman Cobb and try to pick up, pick out a date on when we can meet. Now, I do know that there's some cross-pollination and some council members like to be at other, at some of these other meetings. Would you reach out to me individually if you would like to be, at least we're picking a date that's gonna be convenient for your schedule? So if you would be kind enough to let me know?
I mean, you could do that through Addy with a doodle poll or something if that's what you wanna make sure that everybody's available, but...
Well, I mean- Are you talking about like a specific date for one meeting? Or are you talking about like a scheduling?
Well, I think we probably have one meeting and then in that meeting, we would, we would figure everything out. But, I mean, for example, if council, a member Maddox wants to be in on this meeting, I wanna make sure that even though not necessarily a member, I wanna make sure that his voice is heard.
Yeah.
So just saying. So maybe a doodle poll to start it out is the best way to do it. We could all be part of it.
So I guess I got a question about that. Just based on some of the way the legislation has moved in, does that still mean that anything that's going through our committees is still coming back to committee to hold for discussion? Because there were several pieces of legislation that were discussed in committees. Because I wasn't on those committees, I wasn't in them, and we passed them anyway. They never got discussed at the table. So I just wanna reiterate that. So everything's coming back to this table to discuss. Because I don't want the expectation that if I don't show up to a committee I'm not on, that it's just gonna get pushed through and we won't discuss it because that happened to me just two months ago.
Yeah, that's the same for all of us.
So all legislation from here on out, if it's in a committee, it still needs to get discussed in committee to hold, regardless of who's at the committee, correct?
Well, it automatically does.
No, it doesn't, because I was told that because six out of the seven of us were at that meeting, six, I'm not finished. Six out of the seven of us were at that committee meeting. And so I was told that you didn't need to go to committee to hold and discuss a piece of legislation. So I'm asking, if six of you show up to his committee meeting and something's discussed, will it still come back to the committee to hold table for all of us to discuss? Or we have an assumption that I should have watched the video? That's my question.
No, I don't think anybody should assume that anybody has watched the video.
So we won't be passing any legislation?
Well, let me finish, let me finish what I'm saying. But I think, I think, you know, since all the legislation gets read by me, just like I did here, it, it has that opportunity to be discussed in committee of the whole. So that's gonna happen no matter what.
It didn't, so that's why I'm asking, going forward, this is going, because it all-
Well, I could tell you it will.
Going forward, with all pieces of legislation going through these...
I mean, it has since I've been council president.
It has not.
I, I mean-
So I, I don't wanna even-
Read the legislation?
I just don't wanna, I'm getting offended because we're talking about this Dog Park legislation, excuse me, the, the high school swimming legislation even. That never came in the committee to hold. So I don't want you to say something that's not true. I'm asking going forward, I'm okay with the fact that you're, you're stating that you, how you want to see it. But I just wanna make it clear that if I don't show up to one of his meetings, there's still an opportunity to discuss this in committee to hold because that did not happen consistently since you've been president.
Yeah, we discussed it in committee at all.
We did not. We passed it because everyone went to the Parks and Rec meeting but me and pushed it through, which is why I made the statement that I made, so...
No, we discussed it in committee at all.
We did not, but okay.
I'll send you the link.
All right, please do.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't see who had their hand up first.
Just, just to note, the legislative process that we're voting on tonight specifies that after something is moved out of committee, goes back to committee of the whole for discussion.
Yeah. Right, go ahead.
You have my word, or you have my word. We all, if someone, if there's a, if something has happened in one of these committee meetings, I will make sure that you, you know what happened.
I definitely appreciate that because, because like I said, there's a bit of precedent here. I just wanna make sure going forward, all legislations are being handled the same way. So I absolutely appreciate that. I just don't want us to have to show up to all these committee meetings just to get our voices heard because things are being usurped through committee to hold, so...
Got it.
Thank you.
All right, we, we do have to move on. Councilman Petrus, you gonna talk about housing and building?
Yes, so for clarification, are you looking for an update on the short-term rental legislation?
I mean...
So the Housing and Building Committee met and voted to return the legislation to this group for consideration. The Finance Committee met, had some thoughts on the three percent tax that was included. And I think the group voted to return that component to committee of the whole for discussion as well. And so, Mr. Law Director, do you happen to have any advice for how to handle this conversation now that we've both voted to return it to this group?
Not particularly. I think the, the discussion at the Housing and Building Committee meeting, at least the last one that I attended, which included this, was that staff, I'm pointing at Eric and myself and Alan Butler and Newark Messina would meet again to finalize sort of some of the things that were still under discussion when we were at the last committee meeting. And then that would be sort of provided back as the report of the committee to the council. So that would go to you first. And if it seems like it satisfies the discussion, you know, we can let you know that we're good with it and, and then it can be back to the committee of the whole.
Okay.
Was there a recommendation on the three percent tax from the administration? I don't remember. Did you make a recommendation, Director?
I think as a group, we discussed how it's something that we felt like should be up for discussion.
Right.
Because there was, it was integrated into the overall changes that were being-
Right, the whole framework, yeah. I would, if I might, Mr. President, I think probably that's something that still requires some discussion with the mayor to come up with a formal, you know,
Recommendation.
Recommendation out of the administration. I don't know that that has, has occurred yet.
Because, you know, that's obviously would be a factor in...
Sure, sure.
Do you think that it would be possible for us to have that discussion at the next committee of the whole meeting before our summer recess?
I think so. We're scheduling a meeting, our internal meeting for this week.
Okay, great, thank you.
Except for from the other meeting that you, you know...
Anything else on housing and building? Because I, I didn't wanna limit it to just this, if you...
So our next meeting is next Tuesday. It's typically at five PM. We are moving it up a half hour because there is a committee of the whole meeting that is also that evening. And as I shared, we engaged the Legal Aid Society to compile a list of rights and responsibilities for folks here in Cleveland Heights. So I reached out and invited them to attend that meeting so that they can overview the work that they've done. I'm waiting to hear back from them. And then from there, our committee can discuss ways that we might be able to get that out to folks. And the Law Department could, you know, provide advice on different ways to do that. Is there anything else that anyone would like me to talk about or answer questions about?
We got a couple other things here. Thank you, Councilman. Oh, yeah.
At, at your next committee meeting, I know I won't be able to be there.
Okay.
Because it's earlier, right?
Four thirty.
It's four thirty, so I won't be able to be there. But could you just announce that for the June twenty-ninth, Legal Aid will be doing a, Legal Aid and Judge Costello will be doing that, what do you call it?
Landlord tenant series?
Yes, landlord tenant series where they'll have fourteen or fifteen individual lawyers that will specifically talk to tenants or landlords about anything legal regarding-
Time and place?
It's gonna be at the library, Noble Library.
Noble, okay.
From ten to one thirty. And they will talk to anyone about anything they have to do with anything legal.
Okay.
I'm glad you were able to reschedule that because I know the library was, they had, you know, to close down for a couple more weeks to get it, get it kind of open. Moving on to the Transportation and Mobility Committee and Climate and Environmental Sustainability Committee appointments. I'll turn that over to Councilwoman Larson.
I'll make it short and sweet. I'm proposing that the amendments to the ordinances that created the Transportation and Mobility Committee and the Climate and Sustainability Committee, that they should be fully staffed so they can start their work. And so I'm proposing that these issues, because they haven't been able to start, it affects getting information from the administration and our council back and forth. I'd like to see all seven citizen members appointed very soon so their work can be done and appointed by council.
Okay. Any discussion on that?
And how does it get a-
There's, there's two, so take one. So pass this one that way.
There are two together?
No, they're separate, so one's going that way, one's going the other way. Ninety-seven and ninety-eight.
Okay.
Councilman?
So this is-
Posh had a question.
Oh, go ahead, Councilman.
Can I presume that the appointments are currently made by the mayor?
Three of them were to be made by the mayor, yes.
So it was four, it was, well, first- So it was four, it was, well, first it was all seven or by council or whatever the number was. And then, and it was split 4-3, council and mayor, and then...
Noble.
Uh, yes.
You have 97 and 98.
97 and 98, yes, so it's 97 and 98. So this basically just puts it back to where it was before, all seven members appointed by council. Yes.
Has anyone had a discussion with the mayor as to why there has been a delay in his making any appointments?
Yeah, I have. He's just not been able to, to get people that are willing to serve him. And I, I did let him know about this.
And so this legislation is, because the mayor hasn't made the appointments at this point, you feel that council needs to make the appointments to fill out?
Yes. I mean, I would say for me, it's, it's more than that, but, you know, I, I never thought this was a good policy to begin with. As I've said before, I think that any seven elected members have a deeper reach into the community. I think this is something that council's always done well. And I do believe that council needs to, you know, get moving on this, so this is an opportunity. Yes.
Mr. President, just for purposes of clarification, when you said that it, you know, was at seven and then it went to four and three, and this would take it back to seven, these two specific named committees, including the City Administrator and...
Yeah, they were combined.
Title, yeah. Those are, those, these committees have actually never had seven council members, right? Because that was the first, the first draft of what created these.
The caveat, the caveat I missed was is that these committees used to be combined.
Right.
And when they were...
And then they were split apart and the two staff members were added. So you have eight members, seven of whom are voting, and one non-voting designated staff person for each.
So for accuracy, when the committees were combined, council made all the appointments? Yep. So any... Okay. So we'll, we're not, I, I don't know. Does anybody want to add this to the agenda? Do we want to, you know, we can put it on another agenda?
I would prefer be put on the next agenda.
The next agenda, okay. Any objections to that? All right. Couple more things before we go. Vice President Russell, you wanted...
Yes, I just wanted to let the residents know that we did have a public hearing regarding the Dog Park, which was May 29th. We have decided to have a second public hearing regarding the Dog Park from some of the feedback that we got from the public, where we will be looking at bringing in a vet and some other different speakers regarding the Dog Park situation. So we will have that the week of August 5th after the break. We will be also soliciting the residents around the two, I guess, two or three different areas that residents have brought forward regarding location. So I just wanted to make that public.
I'm sorry, you're going to do some outreach? I understand you're going to have another...
Yes, we're going to do some outreach around the lo, to the neighbors, around the location that people have already said that they would like to see the Dog Park yet. So we had two locations.
Yeah, I think it was two really, or...
Two that...
Two additional to the...
We had one residence thought of Cumberland Park, but they also added Forest Hill Park. And so we wanted to make sure, a couple of people asked about the residents around those two areas. So we wanted to make sure that those people were very much aware of that there was going to be a public hearing so they can have their feedback as well. And then they talked about a vet and a couple other things that we have noticed that we want to make sure we have those a part of the public hearing so people have all the information they need.
Okay.
Before us, before we bring it back for a vote. And, but that will not be until after our recess, and it will be the week of August 5th. And I'll give it to Addy so she can put it in the calendar.
Thanks, go ahead, Council.
Backtrack to those two legislative pieces.
Yes.
Would it be acceptable, given the chance for us to maul this for two weeks, that we could put it on first reading, only approval ask on the 17th of June, on emergency basis?
I'm okay with that. I mean, you know, part of this is to get this thing done.
Yeah.
And it's, and that's certainly one huge part of it.
Okay.
I'm willing to do it. Any, anybody else? Like, in other words, we amend the agenda and put these two pieces on for first reading? Not passing it today, first reading only.
Okay with that.
All right, somebody else have a call?
Well, I, I want to hear from the mayor himself as to, as to what the problem has been and why he couldn't work off of the extra applicants that we've had in the short term to fill it. So for right now, I'm going to be a no on amending this legislation.
Well, this is not for passing it though, right?
Well, they're talking about moving it up on an emergency basis to pass it at our next meeting.
Well, do it, doing a first...
First reading.
She was suggesting a first reading today so that we could vote on it.
I'm a no on that.
Okay. Everybody else is okay with that?
I would vote to add it to the agenda.
I'm okay with it.
I really need more information before voting on this. Just saying, I know we're not voting on it tonight, but I really...
We're not voting, I don't, that's what I think we're not.
So why are we putting it on the agenda?
Again, to expedite things, but go ahead.
Yeah, and if we're about transparency and talking about an orderly legislative process to pull out an amendment in the last 10 minutes of our meeting and then move it on an emergency basis to have a first reading tonight, goes against everything that the majority of us on this council have talked about in terms of having an orderly process and an improvement over the prior council.
Well, go, go ahead.
What I asked for was to have it put on the 17th for first reading only, approval that night, to give us the two weeks, to give us the two weeks.
I misunderstood that.
That's what I thought she said.
I misunderstood as well.
Give us the two weeks to maul it, to talk to the mayor, to do what's necessary, and then...
Yeah, I misunderstood as well.
Yeah.
Because that's not what I heard.
Okay.
Well, my work...
Considering the statement I just made to you.
You know what, then, and it sounds like we're, we're, we're fine then. Because I'm fine, I'm, I'm fine with putting it on, on at the next meeting.
That's what I thought she said.
So it sounds...
Hold it over for two weeks and...
Right. Because this, this seems to be something, a, a part of a process to come up. We need to come up with some kind of agreement on this because that, that, that did leave a bad taste in my mouth, the way we're moving and how we can just add things on. It seems like the discussion is just to say that we had it at that point because we're putting things on the agenda. And although I know we're not doing it in this particular case, we're moving it out, that's becoming problematic for me. And that's where I feel like there's no collaboration and it's breeding distrust on this council. It seems like we're waiting till the last couple of minutes to move things through. And then when I want to have a legitimate conversation, I feel like I'm being dismissed at the table because we already decided to add it to the agenda. That's what I mean by the dismissiveness. And the reason I'm bringing this up is we, we've got a solid half of the year left to go to work together and communicate and collaborate. But these things leave folks who are watching this, not just me, who are filling up my inbox to question what we're doing. And so for, again, for transparency's sake, this kind of stuff, we can stop. We can stop. If even one of us has a question or an issue, let, let's just be okay with us being open to have those conversations so we can stop this. Because there's multiple times where I've questioned several of the things that I've heard and I've seen tonight, and how I've been dismissed. And I know generationally and culturally there's some gaps, but we've, we've got to work on collaboration because this isn't right how we're operating and it's leaving this, this, this feeling of distrust when it doesn't have to be. So if we're going to introduce something like this, just follow the procedures that we have put in place that we agreed to as a council and not try to usurp that by dropping something on the agenda. Because then what is the point of us coming up with an agreement if we're not going to follow it? Legislation like this becomes special all of a sudden and we move it away from a process we literally just agreed to. So I, all I'm saying is, if, if, if you're saying that this thing is transparent and it's open and nothing is happening, let's stop this. And then a lot of what's happening out in the community and a lot of what's happening at this table was ceased. Put it through the regular process and let's discuss it and then put it on the agenda.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Council.
On a very different note, Priam's not joining us, is that right? So I, that is really disappointing to hear. I reached out to the nonprofits at the end of the week and, again, they say that they're not hearing from Guide House or that they've reached out to Guide House and Guide House is not getting back to them. So I was really looking forward to this opportunity to hear from Guide House. My understanding is that they anticipate that their hours will be completed by June. They did not share an anticipated magnitude for the extension that they were going to request. But I hope that in the near future, this entire council can have a chance to get an update and ask questions from them.
Same here, and we'll find that out. We got to go really quick here.
Can, I assume someone from staff is managing Guide House. Can we hear from them to get a sense of where they're at? I mean, there's some communication regularly, I would assume, with, with staff.
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you it's, it's on the leadership agenda every week and, you know, we're...
But there's a main contact person, I would assume, within staff that's working with them on a regular basis.
Director Williams?
I mean, and I'm not looking for names for now.
Is, is there a main person, like a for, for Guide House? Like a kind of go-to?
I think it's been somewhat dispersed.
Okay.
We can see, we can try to find out what happened this evening, you know.
Yeah. All right, well, listen, right now we got a roomful of people, I understand. So this meeting is adjourned?